He was here, I spoke to him before this check.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask him.
We get the box at seven, right?
Maybe he's starting to call you. You know, the speaker of the phone we're about to start. Ron is saying good evening.
What is his name? Solicitor?
Welcome to today's special meeting, November 18, 2024. Please, we're about to call the meeting to order. Go this time and.
I'm on a reach, no agents, we reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, the attorney is with us on the front, so you hear you and some of the ladies outside you well. And that said, statement of the meeting, please.
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act was readily provided in the following manner: by e-mail written notice to the Courier-Post in retrospect on November 13, 2024; by postal written notice on official Baltimore at the Municipal Building on November 13, 2024; by following reading notice with the clerk of the borough Woodland on November 13, 2024.
Look up, please.
Mr. Fontanet.
President.
Mr. Fuentes.
President.
Mr. Rodriguez still absent, he's sick. Ms. Feliciano?
President.
President Erle?
Yeah.
Eric Chorkey?
Yes, sir. All right, from last meeting we had, we had some resolution that we were talking about, and it wasn't really introduced. There was a lot of question by the council, and council requested for a couple of things to be sent to them. And instead of going straight to the resolution, let us just pause at this time and then listen to council and those who might have questions based on what they receive, and hopefully I'll be able to answer some of them, to the best of my knowledge.
Question, please. How to start? I read Mr., what's his name, Awuha?
Yeah, Awuha.
Awuha, his resume, the resume says nothing about him grant writing.
Okay.
So, I mean, it'd be nice if, you know, if it says he's done grants before and he was successful, but according to his resume, he never done that before.
Okay, I don't know how to answer that.
I have a question. Is there a way for us to question him?
Sure.
Like, he can either be called or we can maybe have him, I don't know what. But maybe we call him and see if we can ask him the questions?
I can call.
Because some of the things that we probably need to know
Yeah.
might need to be directed specifically to him with respect to
I understand.
you answering some of the questions that you're asking of him, I mean, answering for us, rather.
Sure.
It might be best to just have him on the call.
Sure.
I don't know if my other council members agree with that, I mean, I want to be in agreement with.
I mean, he answered right to the point, let me give him a call. Hopefully he will answer that. Council, are you gonna be momentarily on hold? And then I would connect you back, is that okay?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Please leave your message for 76282. Sorry, mailbox is full. Send an SMS notification, press five.
I'm gonna disconnect him, I'm calling him later.
Send an SMS notification, press five. Send an SMS notification, press five.
Yes, Emmanuel. I'm doing okay, I am in the council meeting with the council, and there are questions they want to ask you, if you don't mind. Can you spare a couple of minutes, please?
Absolutely, my love.
Okay, all right, council, go ahead. Repeat your question first.
How many grants have you written?
Um, how many grants have I written? Um, my background is the USS for the airport bank. And we've done quite a lot of grants. Um, as far as grants, I started looking at grants from 2019, 2020. I've written about three or four right now.
But there are none on your resume, can you tell us what type of grants you've written? And what you've done, what you have accomplished with them?
Right, so we did a grant with the US EDA, US EDA, and that was for manufacturer's grant for $500,000, which we received, which we was successful. We did something with the city of Newark, and that was with, um, and that's with, um, um, sorry, hold on just a moment, we did that with Auburn Lake. And that was, did you like, a seven million dollar, seven million dollar investment toward the redevelopment.
Emmanuel, can you hold on a minute, please? Hello?
Hey, man, if you got disconnected, we try to get that other gentleman on.
Uh, yes, yes, you're right. Can somebody call Ron, so I don't have to lose Emmanuel, please? Yeah, Jerry's gonna call you in a moment, okay?
Okay.
Thanks. Go ahead, Emmanuel, sorry. Hello, Emmanuel?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Right, so I said that we did a million dollar redevelopment grant with Auburn Lake and the city of Newark, which you were also successful. And we currently sent, we just applied for a grant, this is workforce development, uh, with again NJEDA with CCC, which is the county council on
Wait, you keep referring to this way, not views, respect that.
And that, that we just submitted just a few months ago, right? But what I've done really since 2020 is to really because of my past, because of my finance background, is to really focus on the grants and the grants available in the US, especially with the EDA and with the state agencies and federal agencies. Again, given my finance background, I was able to really study these grants and see where they're coming from and the requirements. And I have a lot of grant writers that work for me and just understand how it works. Because the key is to know how it works, what is the requirements, how to use the key of them, and, you know, and go ahead to do them on time, yes.
Hi, so I have a question, this is Councilwoman Shauna Feliciano, how are you doing this evening?
Sorry, say that again.
I was introducing myself to you, my name is Councilwoman Shauna Feliciano, how are you doing this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you for.
By the way, by the way, just let you know in case my reception is not very good, I'm on a trade mission with the US Commercial Service, US government, currently, right now, in the Caribbean, so I'm actually talking to you from Dominican Republic, but go ahead, please.
Okay, forgive me, first of all, thank you for coming on the line, because we have several questions that we want to ask regarding this role and how you would influence this role. So, one of the questions I wanted to ask you, as you started to explain a portion of that grant writing piece, how do you bring in your expertise by yourself into grant writing? Would you be contracting an outside group or your current outside group to help you with the grant writing that we have here? And then walk me through a typical timeline of how grant writing really happens, from introduction to end, when you get the award?
Well, very good, and that's a very good question. So, inasmuch as I have some level of expertise, there were really grant writers who worked for, in this case, people who worked for EPA in the past, who know the requirements of EPA, and if it was NJEDA, people who work with them. So, what we have is that connection, that network, right? So, depending on the grant, then we'll be able to do our part and where we need additional resources, we'll get those resources. Now, these resources are not cheap, they're expensive, we have the resources to pay them, right? And work with them because we understand, and get the grant written. Now, again, depending on the grant, some of them are very sophisticated, like this one, right, there's a whole lot of things you have to do, and there's a time span. So, this particular is not a grant, you can just sit and write anything, right? You gotta, you know, talk to the community, you gotta talk to the requirements, you need to have a CV, or you need to find a CV that is willing to work with you, that fit the requirement, and you have to, you know. So, it really depends on that grant. Some grants you can do in a week, right? Like, if it's straightforward. The other grants require you to meet with people, talk to them, engage them, come by, in a week, two weeks, three weeks. You know, those kind of things. But what we've done is assembled these experts across the country who know, who are subject matter experts, right? So, if it's EPA, which is environmental, they are, if it's something more than environmental, somebody else, for instance, clean tech, right? So, so that's what, so even though I have an office and I have a staff and I'm doing things, I have that network of people, right? That I can, you know, basically bring to EPA.
So, how would you think that a small borough like Woodland can afford to take on paying consultants on a consistent basis?
Sir, please say that again.
How would you think a small borough like Woodland's going to be able to take on paying a consulting firm on a fairly consistent basis if you're going to start the research and then rely on consulting firms to finish it? Where do you think that money's gonna come from?
Oh, yeah, and that's exactly the reason why we're working with you, because we're also mission oriented, like when I come to Woodland, I'm very sympathetic, right? Number one, I understand the resources that this city has or the borough has, and it has access to, so I'm willing to invest, right? Invest my own resources, because I know that the borough may not have it or may not be able to invest those upfront. So, I'm willing to spend $10,000, $20,000, because I understand, number one, I understand what the grants are, I know the relative chances of sources of failure. And because I'm mission oriented, right? So, I'm willing to invest my own funds, so I'm not asking you to pay me anything upfront. I'm investing my funds and bringing my expertise, but if we're successful, then we can get the work done. And that's, because really and truly, this is the missing link.
So, Mr. Emmanuel.
Because we have small boroughs that don't have that, all that money, that can't engage people and pay them upfront, and that's why things are not.
Forgive me for interjecting for a moment, and I appreciate you giving that explanation. But my question, and I think council would like to know, you know, anytime you're investing in an organization and you're putting your own money as your investment piece into a project that has potential, right? On paper, we need to know, what does that mean fiscally for this borough when it comes to, okay, the grant has been awarded, so how much money is going here and how much money is going there? If the award is not granted, where is the loss gonna be taken? I doubt that the loss is gonna be coming totally out of your pocket, so we need to know on paper.
Let me ask, let me ask you clearly, the loss is gonna come out of my pocket? I don't need anything from Woodland if we don't secure the grant, do you hear? Okay, that's number one. Number two, if we now secure the award, right? So, we need some percentage, but it's not really percentage that you pay us like you just got the check and give us money, no. We're gonna help also in implementing that award and in securing those roles to make sure the award is successfully implemented, that we figure are some roles, you know, for us, right? So, it's really a win-win situation, I know it sounds difficult to believe that somebody can do this, but listen, if you know your business, number one, you know that if, number one, for me to invest, I know the chances are maybe 60%, 70%, 80%, right? And number two, it's not just one grant, there are grants I know I can get to Woodland right away, do you hear? I know that, right? And the only thing is, Woodland doesn't know about it, and Woodland doesn't, you know, haven't ventured and, you know, invested money to get it. So, I'm very confident. Let me give you an instance, this EPA grant, yes, it's a big grant, it's complicated, but when you're available to what they call grant agencies, grant making agencies, right? So, they give you $50 million, $100 million to other people to say, okay, you know, give grants to other EPA, like smaller grants, right? So, it's not gonna be 20 million, it's gonna be 1 million, it's gonna be 500,000. So, I know that we can get grants, and there are so much, for instance, the city of New, uh, sorry, the state of New Jersey had a grant, it's just passed, okay? And this was really like to acquire land, trust me, this is true, and I have the evidence. Now, it was up to $5 million, and this was for cities and nonprofits. So, no, so we're very comfortable with this, do you hear?
So, my other question, so my other question, and that sounds good. But remember, you have to think of our understanding of grant writing versus your understanding of grant writing. We're considering entering into a partnership, if you will, and we need to know on paper what does that mean, so we have a better understanding. So, additionally, on top of that answer, we also need to know why you feel that you are the best selected person and what you bring to the table yourself to this position, go.
Well, thank you, number one, I have expertise, and if you look at my, I mean, I have MBA in finance, which is the primary stuff, right? I've worked for US Department of Commerce, right, from my MBA, that's my first job. And then secondly, I worked for the Exim Bank, US Export and Import Bank, right? As an independent broker, and this all this prepares me and gives me that finance element, expertise. Now, I have a little resources, I'm not very wealthy, a little resources to risk things, which is where we're different. It's gonna be very difficult to find people who say, oh, I'll put my money to the table, right? And this is practically what really sets us apart and really qualifies us for small cities like Woodland, because sincerely, the problem is, the resources are there, right? And that's the missing link. So, when you have a guy like me, who is, number one, because I have expertise, right? I know, I know I'm not gonna lose money, trust me, I know that. If I'm working with Woodland, I will not lose money. I can lose money in one grant, but I'll make it in another grant, right? So, and because I know the resources that exist, I understand it, I understand the risk element, I understand what they want, what they want from the cities, but most of these grants are looking for cities like you. But again, you gotta have to put it together, the packaging, and that's why we're coming, okay? That's number one, number two, we have a lot of expertise, it's not just the grant writing or the consultancy, we're really, we're really modular housing experts. I own a factory so I can build things, like here, we're building 3,000 houses as I speak with you in this Caribbean, in Bambayas, with the government of Bambayas, and this is about 40, 50 million dollars, right? And that's the modular housing, the energy edition concept, and it's being financed by the US government. So, we've got the expertise, we've got the reach, we've got the resources, and we're mission oriented, right? Like, so we want to do well and do good, right? So, we're just not just profit, profit. Now, sometimes you need to make a change in a community and see that community glow, and then you're happy, you've made some change.
Right, I mean, I agree with that, everything you just said about building a community, especially from a small community standpoint. I just need to get a better understanding how you, and I'm around a lot of finance people, as yourself, that are highly educated in the world of finance. But specifically for grant writing, the groups that I'm dealing with do not work with grant writings. We have specific grant writers that we work with that only do grant writing. So, although your resume specifically states a master's in finance, we just want to understand how you yourself would bring in the grant writing. And what you said and what I heard, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that you will be collaborating with your team. So, how does the team that you're collaborating work with this position? Are you also incorporating the benefit to them as well? I mean, because you're putting monies down as a deposit to try to get the grant, but if you win the grant, are the funds that you get back given to your team? We just want to get a better understanding how that works.
So, I write grants myself, by the way, it's not rocket science. If you look at some of the grants, they make them so easy, right? Like, you really need to have the expertise and experience, right? They make them easy for cities to, I write grants myself. But there are maybe some where I would need collaborators. Those collaborators that are not involved in what I'm doing or my negotiation or my arrangement with the city, and that's the reason why I have to pay them, right? They're just like your staff, the only thing is, most of these people are not permanent staff, they're like, you know, like, let me give you an instance so that you know what I'm talking about. So, there are agencies and there are international organizations, like if you needed something, you know, they call three lads people, right? They'll give you, they'll do whatever you want, they'll tell you their price and you pay them. They deliver the work to you, whatever it is. So, no, so I write, but if I need to involve other people, subject matter experts, this is probably what all they do, right? They do it for so many people, and they charge money, not too much, and we saw them out and they go. So, but the relationship between me and, you know, the city, because again, mission oriented, interested in seeing things happen and have resources to be involved in those things in one way or another, right? Yeah, I don't know if I answered you.
I mean, I believe you provided us with some answers today, I appreciate that.
I have a question, I have a question. You said that if we receive the grant, get a warrant, that you will implement the money. What do you mean by that?
No, 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 not implement the money, just to have some kind of role, right? Some kind of agreed role. So, no, no, if we get the grant, the grants, again, depending on the grants, have stipulations, right? But this is the part that the city is gonna do, the city is gonna do. But we're gonna have some role to have, right? To do one thing or another, to make sure that that grant is successfully done, right? That kind of thing, and I don't know if it makes sense. No, we're not in charge of you, we're not in charge of the grant, but we're in charge of some roles, which we see and discuss and negotiate, not a problem at all.
Now, what percentage of the grant would you be getting?
Well, that's a good question, honestly, well, it's not casting stone, we're very flexible, right? And we want to do something that makes sense, right? Again, you can say 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10% or something. Frankly speaking, I don't think, it's not a deal breaker, because it's really, again, mission oriented, let's get something done, right? Because you can't pay us upfront. So, we want to, again, get compensated by doing services along the line of the grant, right? And these things we can negotiate, it's not a deal breaker. We're not doing this for the money necessarily. We're doing this because, by the way, if we did it for Woodland, we're gonna do it for Newark. I'm doing something in Newark, and we're gonna do it for Camden, right? So, yeah, and that's to see level of change. Well, we'll completely give you an instance, this is unbelievable. The US Department of Energy has like $100 million, okay, for to build, to help with energy, residence, housing in neighborhoods like Woodland, for instance, okay? And this is not what we're talking now, I'm just giving you an example, right? There's funding out there, some of them are grants, some of them are low income loans, right? Which you won't be responsible for, we will, or some other people will, but you'll be beneficiary. So, the opportunities are there, but we've kind of worked together to do it. Let me give you, and this is really true, I mean, the U.S. have, sorry, right now, I'm in Caribbean, and one of the people we're meeting with here is Minority Business Development Agency. You will be shocked, the programs they have that we don't even know exist in America, right? So, the information, the knowledge of what is even existing is so important, right? Yet, cities like Woodland, because you guys have. Yet, cities like Woodland, because you guys are very busy, everybody's busy, and you don't have resources to employ your whole crew to go after these things. And this is where we come up here, this is where we wanna help. We wanna help in a win-win situation, right? Not, not just one way, right? Yes.
Hey, no, and sir, my name's Joe Cusani, I'm the CFO. I mean, I guess just starting, going back to the compensation itself. Um, if it is to be commission based, I mean, as far as I know, you know, my experience with grants from a federal, state level, uh, grant writing services are usually not allowed to be charged out of the grant funds. So, I mean, we're talking a twenty million dollar grant, ten percent, two million dollars. I mean, regardless if it's five percent, three, two, whatever you come up with. I mean, how's the borough, you know, expected to pay for that? I mean, such a large fee like that, that would come out of our, our budget. And that's, you know, quite frankly, something that we don't have the funding available for.
Again, not your budgets from the grant. Like I said again, it's not like upfront, you get money from the grant, you pay me now. So I would be doing some roles, right? To make sure the grant works, and those roles are permitted, right? Whatever it is we agree that I'll be doing to make sure the grant works is a permitted role. And that's what your compensation for. Again, it's a catch twenty-two. And we're gonna say, okay, because the borough doesn't have the funds and, you know, Emmanuel O'Gorman doesn't wanna work for free, we should forget it. I don't think so. So you wanna find a legitimate, creative way to do a win-win situation. And that's what I'm suggesting here, right? For instance, if you get these funds, you need expertise, right? To implement the funds, and some of those are expertise we have, right? Which we bring to the table. So that's, again, it's up to you what you wanna do. But this is, this is really stretching out, like you've asked me, okay, you're invested. What is, does it last? And I would say, let's wrap it. I'm not, keep them up from the city, right? I'm gonna play some roles to make it happen, because I have expertise. But it's up to you, if this makes sense, or it doesn't make sense, it's up. But you're absolutely correct. You can't just take money and pay me, no.
Can, can I?
Play a role to make sure that the grant is.
Forgive me, it's Shawna Feliciano again. So, so here's my question, as an example. If I ask you to write a grant for me, okay? Um, I'm expected to find out how much you're gonna charge me for the grant. So my other question I have is, I need to know dollars and cents. Just like in the role of, of your financial experience and, and expertise, we also need to know dollars and cents. What does that mean for the borough? Okay, so we need a definitive answer to find out, what is it gonna cost once things are put through in motion? If the grant is then awarded, what is it gonna cost for your services? Go ahead.
Right, again, I don't wanna be seen as just a grant writer, because that's not what I am. If you remove, if you reduce me to a grant writer, I'm not interested, I'm not, that's not my job. I have expertise, right? In both delivering projects and in writing projects and thinking about them, going to see where they are, bringing them, bringing the expertise, making it happen. This is a little bit, a little bit more broad than just writing a grant. So, I'm, you know, so I'm more of a consultant, maybe more than that. However, again, when you say, how much is your charge? How much are you charging? I'm saying to you, one is, we, we, we need to have it, and this is, this is not for this grant. This is just general agreement, understanding with the city, right? Say, okay, if I bring projects to you, I bring grants, we find a way to save five to ten percent of that grant, right? And we'll find a way where I'll be doing roles to even make sure the grant works. So it's not just getting you grants and you pay me, no, please, it's not. So I'm not a grant writer, are you there? That's not possible for you, I wouldn't do it, right? But I wanna make sure also to help you, to make sure that those grants are implemented properly. So I'm really a part of you, right? And being that a part of you, of course, you wanna compensate you, but I don't think it's a deal breaker, right? So I'm saying, let's look in general terms, five to ten percent, for instance, right? As a parameter, right? And, and these are things we can sit and negotiate and deal with eventually, right? But let's say five to ten percent. But again, I'm not a free person, I'm not pro bono. Let's be clear, I'm not, I'm not doing it for free. But I'm also not doing it to charge you, to pay me. So I don't, I'm not with the borough, right? That's kind of hard to share, right?
Emmanuel, Emmanuel, Emmanuel. Uh, please, hang, hang on a minute, let me help you in conversation. Uh, Joe, what, what Emmanuel is saying is, um, depending on the grant that he's taken for us, that we are not paying him right away that five percent or ten percent. But rather, say, we have a role of a project manager on overseeing certain things as a part of the project. Based on that role, that will get payment towards it.
But if it's that amount of money, we don't realistically have that kind of money.
No, 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 it's not from a Woodland budget, it's from the grant.
But I know the grant is gonna be, uh, given to the consultant and less, and whatever's left is to the project.
No.
No?
Here's a clarification, like you just said, I, I'm getting it now. He is not, he is not a grant writer, he is a consultant. What he's gonna do is help this league to get the grant. Now, we will pay him, nothing to do with the grant. If we're successful with the grant, that's great. But we're gonna pay him for his time to do all that research and do all the paperwork to get us the grant. But that's what you have to suffer.
He hasn't, he hasn't answered the, the, the specific question, it's not a pers- He hasn't said, okay, it's gonna be a five percent or ten percent?
He said it to a five or ten percent.
Right, but that's a big difference. Five percent, ten percent is still there.
You just gotta know.
Right, can I say something to it though?
Go ahead.
So, so if a grant is ten billion, right, for instance, then you can look at five percent angle, right? But if the grant is one billion, maybe you can look at a six percent, seven percent. And I'm saying to you, these are things, you're reasonable, we're reasonable, because we wanna do this, right? So these are things we're negotiating with fate as we go. But if you say five to ten percent, which means you're gonna say, Emmanuel, I'm doing back superior. I would say, no. So you get to a point where you can say, okay, Emmanuel can do six percent. But the point is also to make it flexible for you. You can't be saying ten percent of twenty million, what is that? It's not, right? He can't even be saying five percent of twenty million. So the point is, for what we wanna do and the fact that we have this mission oriented perspective, we are quite flexible. And this is where you should appreciate this, because you're not gonna find this very common, right? Yeah, so it's not to beat it down, it's, okay, what can we do? And then you, as a, as a city, you can say, okay, we're gonna give him compensation, I wanna give him five percent. You know, so you make that decision, not me, right? Because I am flexible and it's a bit, you know, it's not that, like, easy for me to tell you ten percent, right?
Well, I think ultimately.
I don't know if it makes sense, so you should, you should say, well, I'm giving you the parameter.
Hold on. As a grant administrator, without not to exceed, if the grant is successful, as opposed to putting a percentage in there, I would know that the borough would not be able to afford nor pay in that capacity. But if you're making yourself, like you mentioned, someone who's in, in charge of administering the grant, then you can give yourself a salary. But at that same time, you know, that, that can't be a percentage. You're gonna look at it based upon the time and whatnot to administer the actual grant as you put your proposal together.
And I'm okay with that, that, that's what I'm saying. Again, the city should be able to decide, like, you know, I'm just flexible, right? You know, very, very willing to help. But, you know, you're the government, you've got authorities, so you can say, okay, this is how we wanna do. And I'm, I'm okay, right?
Welcome to electric wheelchair.
Really sincerely wanna help.
Reverse. Please be cautious.
But I'm helping, but we do well and do good, it's that concept.
Right, I'm sorry to cut you off, I just have a question though. Regardless of what the percentage is, are you telling us that that entire amount's gonna be allowed to be charged to the grant? Or is this gonna come to us as an outside service, being paid out of a better budget?
There's nothing that comes to you outside that grant period. Everything we're discussing is within the grant period.
So that would mean that any of those grant writing services could not be charged to the grant? That would have to be paid if we were to get billed for that. That cannot come out of the grant, because, and essentially, it's like we're talking about two separate roles here. There's a grant writing portion and a grant administration, uh, portion to it. So to be an administration.
Right, so forget the grant writing section, it does, right? It's all roped into that administration role, which you're paying for, which covers that, right? I don't know if it makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, but the, the problem is if.
That's why I said, forget from the beginning, I'm not a grant writer, I'm, I'm a consultant, right? So you're roped into that.
Yeah, I understand, but the, the problem is, though, for, for instance, if they select this grant for audit and they come out and say, okay, what services you pay for out of the grant? Any of that time spent to write the grant itself cannot be charged.
No, no, it doesn't, it's, you leave that up. What I'm saying to you is, I've gotta have a role that is legal, legitimate, and desirable and, and approved under the grant. So, so you don't have a company, you don't have a problem.
Well, I mean, as far as from a contract perspective too, if we're gonna sign an agreement, we have to have it nailed down. How much is it gonna cost, what percentage? You can't just have a variable percentage.
You nail it down, right? I've said I'm flexible, right? I've told you, I've shown you how this can be done, which is a role, right? And, and that role can be living. But that role is gonna be performed, and that role is allowed to be performed, right? So, then we can answer all the questions this night, right? But it's have to have an understanding and to put, if you've got lawyers, right? Put something that, that makes sense for you, right? Yeah, but if something you're not interested in, that's fine.
On our side, you are okay with writing a grant as a contingency. And then you're fine with only being compensated for work that's not pursuant to any work you do as part of that grant budget, pretty much the administrative. You're fine with not charging the borough for the time it takes to write and submit.
That is correct, that is correct, hundred percent, yes.
And I guess on top of that, how do we know, you know, say, not even specifically for this one grant we're talking about, um, each grant has different terms and conditions. I mean, we need to be one hundred percent sure that these other grants or whichever ones we're trying to pursue allows for these charges.
Right, so each grant has requirements. You, you look at it and design, they're written, they're written, they're clear, right? And then you look at it, you look at the grants, and you see the requirements, and you deal with it. And when I present a grant to you, you don't like it, fine. But if you wanna pursue it on your own, good luck, right? So, I know it sounds too good to be true, but listen, you know, people have to make sacrifices to make gains, right? And then, if you're passionate about something, I've seen many, so much of these grants come and they're not utilized. Why? Because there's no resources to put them together, for instance. So, it might sound tricky to be true, but it is true, right? Yeah, and you only have to do, put it right and inside it.
Well, even aside from, you know, the, the fee that would be used for your services, I wanna ask a question specific to this grant. Now, this is a large grant, twenty million dollars, is this a reimbursement based grant?
No, no, this is upfront pay, uh, pay grant. So they give you money before you do the work, it's not reimbursement based.
So we would receive.
Which is another thing, I mean, a hundred percent, I mean, this is the best grant in America. And I, I pray and wish and plead with you not to miss it. I mean, there's no guarantee we're gonna get it, but at least let's put our best effort, you know, forward.
Okay, and on top of that, um, who is gonna be in charge of managing the specifics of the grant? Because now we're getting into territory that falls under the two CFR two hundred as far as, because this is all gonna be sub recipients, aside from our portion. Um, who, who will be the one?
So the way it works is, you, you, when you, for instance, the, the, the CBO, you know, the CBO is, is the strategic partner. So whatever we agree with the CBO, they will have to handle it. Of course, the bureau, in the primary or the lead applicants, will oversee all that boot to the sub recipients as well, right? Yeah.
So who would be the one, who would be the, who would be the one drafting the sub awards, making sure it contains all the required information? And who's gonna do the continuous monitoring? Because we're gonna need to produce documentation.
This is where we come in, I mean, there's a lot of money, right? So we're, we're gonna need to get additional resources in hiring people, getting expertise. But, and this is why I say, we're not just bringing it to you and disappearing. We wanna work with you and bring whatever additional resources required to manage that grant, yeah. But, but that's, and the grant allows for that, because they, they know that the small cities and the CBOs where this grant is meant for, have those resources, right? So there's, there's allowance for that.
And I guess going back to the budget, so even for the borough's portion, there is a line item for personnel and fringe benefits, one million dollars basically in total. Are we, you know, are you proposing for us to hire individuals to charge to the grant? Because if that's the case, most grants only allow employees to be charged to those type of lines. Are, are we expected to hire individuals and bring them on our payroll?
Oh, yes, you can, you can hire people, and you can plug on part-time basis, right? Yeah, and that's the truth of the matter. Again, the, the, the grant, if we say is that you may not have the expertise, but it, it helps or it wants you to get whatever expertise you don't have to get it, right? To be able to implement that grant program.
How, how many employees do you foresee needing for a grant like this, this size? How many additional people are outside of?
Not that much, I mean, two or three people. But half of it can also be outsourced, right? Just like your socioengineering section, your socioaccounting section, that kind of a thing. So it doesn't necessarily have to be full-time employees, right? But you obviously have to have a few people dedicated to the, right, to this grant, right? To, 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 to the management and the record giving those kind of things, yeah. Two or three people like that, that age.
What's his name?
So then, for those services that would be performed, you know, you said you would have to hire, you know, akin to an engineer, would that fall under the contractual category as part of the proposed budget?
No, I think all those can be like part-time or, you know, at work kind of thing, right? Again, we, we, that, I mean, Emmanuel is an engineer, right? So, so there's no question that you're gonna need some of the people you work with right now. The expertise you have, you're gonna deploy them to this. But additional thing you need can be estate benefits, right? Or contractual benefits, or, you know, on, on part-time bills, not full-time. Because you actually have a lot of expertise between the mayor and some of the engineers you have. And that is gonna be the business for the qualifications anyway. If you didn't have any of those expertise, it would be impossible, because they're actually required.
Right, I mean, you know, if, like I said, if they're gonna be charged to personnel and fringe benefits, you know, we don't know who would be the proper people to hire for these positions. Are you going to recommend individuals to hire as borough employees?
Well, absolutely, I mean, it's not just me commenting, but yeah, you do, you're right, right? Yeah, but people is not a problem, uh, available, right? Yeah, that's not an issue at all, we'll get them, they're available. Wherever you need our help, and that's why I'm saying, we really wanna help, really handhold and make sure it's successful. You know, should we, this is us when we're getting the grant. And like I said again, it's like a partnership, really, truly.
And just from my experience in working with federal grants as well, there are some aspects that need to be addressed before these type of things even take place. Like, we don't, we don't have any policies and procedures, you know, for monitoring sub awards, uh, expanding these type of grants. Is this gonna be part of the services too? Because there's gonna be some things we need to do from the borough's perspective that haven't been done yet, to be in compliance.
That is correct, and that's the, that, and that's the idea of the grant. Because they wanna give capacity where you don't have it, right? So they want you to grant to help you build that capacity, because they think it's needed, right? So, again, the ones you don't have, we go out and acquire it, right? And do it, and then, but beautiful thing is that you will have it. You're not just having it for this grant, you're gonna have it for the other grants, right? That capacity is key. And the government knows that, that's why small cities are not progressing. And that's one of the aspects of this grant, is to really build the capacity for small cities like yours.
But on top of that, that would be an additional cost to the borough, because the grant's not gonna pay for, for us to write policies and procedures.
What I'm talking to you is about the grant, the grant will fund it, right? The grant will fund it, this particular grant will fund it. This grant is for three years. Within that three years. Within that three years, like I said, there are so many other grants. If nothing happens, it's only this grant. After over three years, people can go, right? But, I can tell you that you're gonna have so many other grants, that you have the resources to keep them, right? Because the city needs to grow. Let me tell you, and I don't mean this in a bad way, okay? The city of Woodland needs to grow, period. There's no question about it. I mean, it's go to other cities, okay? I win, accept that. So, the city needs to grow, the city needs to improve, the city needs to have, and there's some resources, some building, some things to, at least, you know, dimension up to the others. And that's what we believe, and let me tell you, the first time I came down, like, wow. Who's gonna help here, right? Yeah.
Right. I guess, there's so many things to touch on. But as far as the partnership agreement, has that been drawn up? Has that been reviewed? Just to meet all the requirements to even apply for this grant? You know, I noticed that that needs to be signed and submitted with the application. Has that been executed?
Right, the partnership agreement, they actually, they actually have, they have the prototype. So we just follow their prototype. So, it's, it's very generic, and it's just saying, we're gonna partner, period. And then if it says statutory partnership, without it, there's no grant period. And what they don't wanna, what they wanna do, they don't want one, they don't want one entity. Okay, to even apply for it. So they want two entities. Kind of a balance, but the key though is, you have the budget for that statutory partner, and you have rules for them, and you're gonna monitor them. But their agreement is just so generic. They give, they give a sample, and it just, basically, and they say you can occupy the sample. You just put the name of, you know, the partners on the, they.
Right, I mean, from my perspective, I, I just, to feel comfortable, we need assurance that it's not gonna cause any additional cost to the borough. You know what I mean? If it's grant-related expenses.
And now we can put it right in, and that I was saying to you, there's nothing extra to the borough, period, G Y D. Right, like, it's not, it's not, it's not conditional. Everything we're talking is gonna be about the grant, this grant, or other grants that we bring to the table, okay? We understand, let me tell you the truth, we really understand the situation of the borough, and we wanna help. The only thing is, we wanna do good and do well, and I don't think we can fault that, really.
Um, can I ask a question? I'm reading what the agreement proposal that was put in here. And it says, I'm gonna read it, cause this is coming from Mr. O'Wah, that guy, okay? Had been performing services in evaluating and applying for the grant. But we currently do not have a contract agreement, okay? So that's what it says, right? In place to do so. So, are, are, we expected to bill, be billed for these services? And so, we have no means to pay them without a purchase order, correct? Okay? Um, says here also, wait, excuse me, a phone. Um, purchase order in place. But it says also, there is close to a million dollar allocated to indirect costs. Typically, these costs are attributed to an indirect cost plan performed by an outside service, which we currently do not have. Okay, this is what was put in here, okay? You could say a lot of stuff in the phone, but in the paper that I have that you sent, it's saying that if we don't get the grant anything, you're doing services already, and you started doing services, and.
No, 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 that is.
Well, that's what says in the paper.
That is clear, no, 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 no.
Uh, that's okay. Emmanuel, 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 Emmanuel. That, that's okay. That was questions that we were sharing with each other when we were reviewing your resume, and when we were reviewing your proposal, so.
Thank you for using your electric wheelchair.
Sorry.
Okay, it's just a question that we were talking with each other, with ideas of things that is very concerning. That's all.
The other question is, I know you've mentioned twenty million dollars, or you said twenty million dollars, but that's not what we're gonna be getting. It's money grant that's given that's going to OYO, um, these other organization. That means we might be getting eight or nine million dollars, or, excellent sample. Is that, uh, the plan of that twenty million dollars, or whatever it is, they're gonna give? That this is how it's gonna be distributed?
That is correct, that is correct, the twenty million, if I, by the way, this really called a community change grant. And the business requirements is actually CBO, but they want two CBOs, or a CBO and a university, or a CBO and a city, that kind of a thing, right? So they don't want one entity to control it. And by the way, for you to get this grant, you need to have community change, right? So they wanted few other entities, nonprofits to be involved, right? Yeah, that's the nature of the grant, period.
And the grant purpose is to help the community, their homes and everything else. It's not to build homes outside the community where it's also part, you know, we have land and everything. Is that part also to build homes or not?
The grant is for infrastructure, for, no.
Plugging.
Correct. It's just for people who are plugged in.
Sorry.
The center?
Place where we come in and get trained in green technology. So, the answer to your question is yes. It permits new construction, it permits helping the system home to become more energy efficient, pollution control, yes.
Will you have, who are the people in service to do this already or not?
That is correct, we do that, we do, we do have that. So, so we have CBO in role, we have NBB, New Beginnings, we have Woodland, and we, you know, and that, you know, and, and, and we're, we're talking to projects, and if you're the, you know, nonprofits, right? Yeah, so we have those, it's not a problem at all.
Okay. Um, hold on. So, the thing is that this is not something that you said earlier, that you mentioned, you know, five percent or ten percent. This could be just a contract that the township to sign with you, uh, for services only. Is that correct or am I wrong?
Sorry, say that again, please, let me.
Okay, you mentioned, see, you never gave an amount. You just mentioned earlier ten percent, five percent, okay? But if we asking for the services, right? They say a contract to do the services, there's no amount in the papers or anything that we received, right? That's something that you have to talk to, you know, us, and you have to present an amount, right? Because to see.
That is correct, that is correct. And again, we're gonna do things, again, we're flexible, I'm gonna do things that, you know, will help really perform a role to make the grant done, right? So there are roles, and we're gonna perform those, and we're gonna get some, you know, compensation for doing that, right? Again, I don't think it's something you should be worried about, because we wanna do good and do well. For me, for instance, let me give you an instance. If I can just say, I brought twenty million to EDA grant to Woodland and Camden. Have you tell you, that's, that serves me in so many other places. Remember, they're asking, okay, what are your grants? We have been done it. So that alone is what's valid, what's valid. So the point is, I just don't want to be too worried about it, it's very, because again, we're gonna be sitting, we're gonna be talking about it, we're gonna be agreeing on how do we do this? And you know, when, when this is right, yeah?
Okay.
And I said to you, there are so many other grants, like, again, this grant, there are fifty million, a hundred million given to other agencies, they are called grant makers, now to apply to, right? Again, you know, it's not for twenty million, it's gonna be for one, one million, it's gonna be for two million, depending on what you write. And then there are a lot of grants built these, in the states, right? EDA grants, right? That we can go for, the police national EDA grant. So there's, there's, there's so much out there. However, it requires effort and ability and time and money, right? And since Woodland, we, we're not in our position to, you know, bring this money upfront, we're saying, we can partner with you and make some of these things happen.
Correct, um, is, is it, I got, is it part of, you know?
By the way, this partnership, sorry, these partnerships are not strange. Like, we, we're partnering with the city of Newark, right? To build affordable housing in Newark, right? And these affordable houses, it's pretty story buildings for Newark residents. And we're doing a fraction of the price. And Newark is bringing land, that's selling land to residents for like one dollar, that kind of a thing. So this is, this cities do this all the time, right? Yeah. And it's called, hopefully, private partnership, right? So, yeah.
Okay, my, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
Everybody else? Oh, sorry.
Okay, all right, okay, bye.
Now, I have a question. Any contract that, um, that is, uh, put together, has to be, has to be approved, right? By council? Yes, correct?
That's correct, yes. Has to be approved by council.
Do you need to raise a question again? How much more? When you say contract?
No, he just asked a question.
No, he just asked a question. Okay, because he talked about having roles and so forth, so forth. So, it's hard him to do something, okay? I mean.
Oh, yeah, that one, that one, sure. You know, once, once everything is come out, and we need, uh, some kind of a management thing that we can use to handle, yeah? We'll figure out that, and then we can sort of approve, I believe.
And the council has the right to, uh, if we'll, uh, like, another service instead of him, we could do that, okay?
Uh, again, I, I mean, I've, I've known Emmanuel for over one year now, I believe so. And, um, he been, you know, fine tuning me about how he can help us grow, or grow in Woodland. And, um, I've been backing off him. And every once in a while, he get this great idea, and backing off him. And, um, eventually, this grant, we say CBO, community-based organization. Uh, fortunately, we got two churches, but when they are serving with the community, we're really, really qualified to go for that grant. And eventually, there is a community that he find out, uh, in Atlantic City. They combine with one of their CBO, and get this grant, and say, you guys can do that. Since we don't have a CBO, anyone else. But meanwhile, we have organized like three meetings with the community, and talked to them about this grant. And they have, you know, given some suggestions and stuff like that. And, um, I believe today is the deadline of entering the grant, and I don't even know if.
He said the twenty first, wasn't it?
Yeah, he said the twenty first.
Daryl? Daryl?
Today's eighteen.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, the question, yes, they have a question.
Um, the deadline for this admission is the twenty first of this month?
I believe so, that, that, that would be, was it Thursday?
Thursday, yes.
That's all we.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but it's, it's shut down now, it's shut down tomorrow, it's shut down onto that twenty first. So that twenty first, who knows if you're gonna have a glitch or not, that will allow you to throw a pencil. Or there's one of these.
Uh, I, I, but you push that.
Is there any other question, any council now, or?
Kim, okay, one, this, if there are certain aspects of this grant in a whole that are appealing, can we push forward with the smaller portions and leave the giant portion out that is the source of contention that we're not like properly equipped to handle at this time? I mean, we need to find more realistic things, and some of these portions of this benefit us greatly. You know, the, the community help with health, the mental health, just, you know, health, that type of stuff. That stuff is perfect, but the other stuff, not so much. The other stuff is just way too concerning and way too overwhelming to have this little bit of time to figure out how to put something like that in motion for.
Well, what I would suggest is, the solicitor is here, he, he had what Imma said. And, uh, I mean, we're not gonna approve this as it's made. But he has to massage this to make sure that it's stepping in there.
Who's gonna massage it, though?
Our, our lawyer.
The lawyer, okay, thank you, cause I thought you were talking about this manual.
No, 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 no.
He did not agree anything with.
Our lawyer will change this, indicating what Joe said, that, you know, charging us anything upfront. That is nothing's gonna be a grant service. However, there will be a role for you when the grant comes out, which you will do, that is gonna be paid solely to the grant. And that's what he's, uh, he's looking for. And, um, hopefully, by the time this grant, around three years out, he might be able to procure more bigger grant for us. And, and then, you know, that'll be awesome, and then we'll move on. And, uh, trying to expand Woodland, make a change. It will benefit everybody, really, it will benefit everybody.
How often does this grant come up, this specific one?
Uh, I don't know if it's gonna come out again, since we're changing administration, and this guy is getting rid of everybody.
I was told every three, four years.
And that's how they push the date backwards.
Right, I, I remember that, but.
I don't think it's coming out again, once they give up all this money. But if it comes out again, by that time, we will help the community to fund, or have a CBO, okay?
Correct, we just had like nothing in place.
This is like total chaos, it really is.
So let me ask a question, if I may. So, I understand the council president, she's comfortable along with council, comfortable moving with resolution, uh, twenty-four sixty-eight, twenty-four sixty-nine, twenty-four seventy. About, correct or incorrect? About fully Emmanuel, uh, consulting. Um, it wouldn't hurt anything, because he's still doing what he's doing. At this point, we haven't appointed him, but he's still pursuing to try to get this grant. If the grant comes in, then he will like, and I'm, just correct me if I'm wrong. If the grant is a successful, then out of that one million, he can start getting administration fee off of that to cover his costs. Is that what he's saying?
Can I ask a question too? Forgive me. If, if we're comfortable with these other components here, resolutions listed here, is it out of the question to ask for an RFP for, for someone to provide the same consultant services that he's offering to provide? I mean.
The thing is, he started, he started the ball on his own time, on his own time. He started the ball hoping that this is successful, and then to show that, hey, look what I was able to help these guys get. Now you need an administration department to run and administrate this money and allocate it where it needs to be allocated, but it comes through the government.
I get that, I'm just not, I don't know the rest of the gentleman, I'm just not very comfortable with this gentleman. I, I, that's my honest opinion, just from the conversation, the way the resume.
Well, let me ask you a question. If he is successful in getting this grant, then it comes down to a point to now saying, we need somebody, and he's able to come back with more questions than you are concerned on what he can do, then looking to see either if he can do it, or you wanna do an RFP? I don't know, but then I think the solicitor mentioned something like capping something? I don't know.
That would be an option to cap it, because, yeah, without knowing what the amount's gonna be.
He's not too extreme, something I'm not.
Right, cause if it does go over pay to play, you're gonna.
What is the threshold, sixty-five? Maybe?
A lot of seventeen-five for the pay to play, um, just political disclosure, those sort of things. But, yeah, depending on the amount, you're gonna have to go out for RFPs if it exceeds that amount.
Yeah, that's the only thing, you gotta be careful.
Right.
Does it require you need to be appointed at this time?
Well, it, it's, it's not, it's for his, it's for his comfort, because two cities have, they need a grant, and they get it, because if they didn't have an agreement, they do it now. And he was like, really? Well, he guys, I said, well, don't you trust me? If the bank is good, you know, the council will be happy to, to, you know, do, at your point, and do whatever they wanna do for you, so I'll send this in to them. But, you know, since, uh, council is not comfortable with it, as of this moment, and, um, I hope he will be comfortable to continue his guidance and, you know, boost up here.
So you need the three resolution for the twenty first, correct?
Go ahead, go ahead, Matt.
Darryl?
Yes?
Okay, the mayor's.
You weren't trying to say something?
No, I'm sorry, I was clearing my throat.
So, you need, for the twenty first, you need these three resolutions?
I mean, I mean, I, I guess in terms of, um, what I'd like to take in addition to, um, some of the concerns that the, um, CFO thought of, and you had a separate agreement with all the, the partners, there are one, uh, a quick, uh, contingency agreement for, uh, the writer, you know, leaving, and expect a compensation for that. Um, and also, um, there is a support from the partners making clear, we're gonna hit the heads and ends in terms of, um, that they can take about a grant.
You broke up at the last part, sorry.
Um, there is no support, it may not be long, it would be one pages, um, you know, that there, you know, it would be viewed by everyone, that's what we submitted with the grant, um, okay, that we get enough easily to some understandings and writing amongst all the parties, um, the assault and ticket to the grant, and this, I mentioned the project is very unlikely, gonna get, you know, twenty million dollars due in the size of the borough, even if there's a smaller award, um, everybody's an expectation, that'll be clear.
Okay.
Yeah, he could want to, like, contingent on the grant approval, and then we will do that.
Darryl, they're gonna move our resolutions, and it will be clear, we're just gonna move resolution with appointing the partners, and then we will rework on the resolution that was presented, and we will have to amend and, um, modify, not amend, but modify their, um, the resolution. You comfortable with that?
Excuse me, forgive me, um, are you, are you stating what you just said, when you said the three, are you talking about specifically resolution sixty-eight, resolution sixty-nine, and resolution seventy, that we're gonna be proposing today, and then sixty-seven is contingent on whatever we consider agreeing on after these, uh, first, these last three resolutions are put in play? Is that what, is that what we're seeing?
Darryl, is that what you're looking at?
That's what I'm looking at, I mean, there's some tweets with the language, um, that I would like to see in terms of, um, given our conversation today, about it being continued upon, uh, the grant, and, uh, subject to the, the budget asset, that I saw what was sent over, um, I'm not sure if the CFO wanted to touch upon anything or else, um, I, I don't think he very could give up these, uh, critical cracks in time, in terms of what language you put in there.
Well, are you saying for, for the application, or for the, I guess, the commission-based fees, I guess, which portion?
Both of them. Okay, let him put them together, I'll send it to you, look at it. And then adjust what I need to.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I think, I think we all agree to take with that, and it seemed like, um, Emmanuel was fine with not taking a commission based upon the award and just, you know, writing on a condition that he can get paid, so the role, to the administrative, and administration would be burning somehow.
That's what he said, that's what Emmanuel said.
I think that's wrong.
And he's, he's willing to do that, so instead of doing this a piece mail by piece mail, let put all that language together, okay, with the approval for him to go after grant for us, and when you finish putting it together, let it be the, uh, sixty-seven, send it to the CFO, let him look at it and feel comfortable with it, and then if you need anything changed, let him put them in there, and you look at it and change it, and both of you are much more comfortable with it, disseminate it to the council, let's look at it, and then we go for it, right?
So for, so I understand, just for today, we're just gonna be reviewing resolutions sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy, and after the solicitor and our CFO have another deeper dive into the specifics of resolution sixty-seven, we will then at another time look at that resolution, correct?
Well, I, I, I think the best thing tonight, probably, that captures everything is to approve, we don't have that from you right now, this moment, is just to approve, um, the drafting of a, a memorandum of understanding amongst all the parties, um, one, um, that captures using, um, Emmanuel term as a consultant, and then also partnering with those, um, two, uh, community-based organizations purely for the purposes of this grant, and I would, um, reference the grant number, um, I dropped that MOU, and then that would be, um, uh, signed off.
But, but are you saying that, okay, so, um, forgive me, I, I, what I'm hearing is that we're still pushing somewhat of an understanding with sixty-seven instead of tabling it, is that what you're saying?
No, so pretty much we'll be walking on a new resolution to draft up a memorandum of agreement, which is kinda like, you know, Mr. Bearbone's contract, which takes the expectations, and I've heard everyone say at the table, um, and then next council meeting, uh, entertain more formal resolution after, that will just give, um, the mayor and the, um, um, other professional authority to submit the grant, that's the main thing that you need, and then the other pieces, which you don't have time to do by Thursday, we do it next council meeting, so the MOU will just grant that authority to do that, so that's the issue of disagreement.
I understood what he said the second time, I'm, I mean, I still personally have questions, but, um.
Well, go, 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 go ahead and ask.
I mean, I don't think that I'll get a full understand, I mean, I might need to sit on that one, to be quite honest with you. I mean, I'm in total agreement with the other resolutions as far as the importance of how it affects our town, um, I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel like I fully have a, a full grasp on, on how these terms are gonna look like on paper with resolution sixty-seven, so I just wanted to be able to, no, I understand.
And that's why I wanted to adopt those as currently drafted, in fact, you don't have the time, um, from these conversations, you know, you need tweets, so what I would recommend now is just authorizing the memorandum of understanding that has the, uh, contingencies that, one, they're named, um, Emmanuel term as a consultant for the purposes of submitting this grant, and then, two, you would also have, um, the community-based, um, part of three, really, Rutgers, and then the two organizations.
Well, Darryl.
For the purposes of submitting this grant, how, that that language for the purposes of submitting this grant will limit.
Darryl, Darryl, let's, let's look at it this way, but there's no rush for him, he's, he's feeling comfortable to, you know, for us to move forward with this here. If, if you can get it drafted for the next council meeting, and council will have it before that, so they can review this whole thing, instead of just saying memorandum of understanding, why not just go ahead and vote for the three resolutions, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy, and then the Emmanuel, which is sixty-seven, hold that to the next meeting, because it's not gonna change anything, because although he's still moving forward, he's already started, so we did not get the grant, so it's, we're not gonna find out we get the grant by December's meeting anyway, so we can move forward on that, on that point of.
Okay, so, so we taking out the ten percent?
Yes. Because you can't put a ten percent when he's already saying five percent, three percent, you know, and we're not sure, so we have to put, this is where you and the CFO should sit down and really look at this budget and, and put a dollar sense, making sure that we don't have to go for RFP, um, and then look at the, the cap, I'm just looking at the, the financial point, and also the litigation that can come later on if we go with not really putting a number sign down, you know what I mean? We have to put something, because that, that's open a Pandora box to saying like a blank check in a sense. I mean, he's willing to do the work, and he wants us to negotiate ahead, but that's at what cost? You know, because if he, if he comes over and he says, you know, if, if we say we're gonna do thirty thousand, and he's gonna be like, you know what, I spent sixty thousand dollars, how, however I'm gonna get that, at least compensate me for my time that I spent the sixty thousand, so it's not gonna hurt anything to move forward under December right there. I'm, I'm looking at council's face, and I think this is what you rather do.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not gonna hurt anything to move forward with the, the, on Thursday meeting, to put the three in there, and then have everything submitted, um, to Joe, and Joe can look at it along tweaking everything, because when we start saying the memorandum of understanding, um, there's nothing clarifying on this resolution.
So, so I guess what we're doing, practically speaking, is that we're going to submit the grant by, uh, the Thursday deadline, correct?
Yes, right, mayor? Thursday? Yes.
Okay, and then by next council meeting, we're gonna draft these tweets resolution that clarify what we discussed today.
Yeah, 'cause what the mayor said is that Emmanuel, Emmanuel is looking for some kind of security, saying, hey, listen, I'm doing all this work, I would like to be named as your consultant and administrator to handle this, not for you to move on and once you get it, that you can give it to someone else, and, and we have time for that. What we don't have time is the three resolution.
Right.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I know that, you know, it's horrible timing, we got to leave, uh, this week, is the, um, are the mayor able to give us the final grant package, um, sometime this week before you, um, submit, I'm not saying for the purposes of holding it up, but at least we get a chance to, um, all look at it and, and ask whatever questions remain.
Uh, I'm, I'm lost with your question.
So now you're going to the application?
Yes, yes.
Submit on the federal website, and when you're about to submit, you can put out your draft, and in terms of EPA with a grant, are you able to circulate that around, um, as you submit that, I won't hold you up, but just have, so everyone has a copy of it, that'll help verify those resolutions?
Yeah, whatever I will submit, I download it and save it, and then upload it into the, uh, GovDot.
Correct, and you can tell us the support from, uh, CFO already?
Letters of support from CBO is what we're about to sign, to have the, as our, what do you call them?
Three.
Start entry, yes, start entry, uh, then, so that's what we're getting from, once they, we sign it, I believe we give it to them, and then they will sign it, that's what we're.
Right, I, I saw the resolutions that were drafted.
Yeah.
To name them, but typically they should also send like a brief letter, like a one pager or two pager, that summarizes, you know, what they are, what their mission is, and that they're committed to submitting the right name, blah, 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 normally the programs ask you to upload those as well.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm nervous on this, maybe what you are saying is out there that I'm not aware of, but, you know, he, he has a lady that, um, she's probably in her seventies, that she, uh, everything together in the package and then send it down, and then before I download it, I will go through them, I will bring them all out as a package, once I finish going through them, I distribute it to whoever wants it, so you go through and see if you find whatever you need to find, however, there's a checklist, there isn't, there is a checklist that she goes through those, checklist, make sure everything is in.
Yeah, yes.
Darryl, also a question, we're working on the resolution, um, we're, we're wanting a partnership, um, but we also need a name to, to go with the, um, uh, partnership, for example, example, new beginning behavioral health, uh, we need a name added to that, a point of contact, just like when we do the professional service, when we mention BAC associates, we have Mark, and we have the Burrell attorney, we have you, when we have the Burrell engineer, uh, for planning zoning, we have Uzo, um, where we have Bowman, the auditor, we have Dan DeGangi, so, uh, all, all three, we just need to be a, a name to, to pair with the partner. And then what I'll do is, I'll send you over the resolution that was presented, so you know which number would need to go with what. For example, sixty, sixty-eight is CC, CO, EO?
EO.
EO, and, well, it's got CC, CEO, EO. And then the other one, new beginning, it's, uh, resolution sixty-nine, and Rucker is resolution seventy, so I'll send you that, so when you're working on that, it could, it could tie in with these resolutions as we move forward to, um, approving, pending, and all that is in, in place there, and you say the letter you don't need, just so I'm clear, 'cause this is where here, as I'm putting resolution, and I'm following things that the letter's not needed, it's just what the supportive document that will go from the individual providing, as the mayor stated?
Yeah, I think the only thing that, um, I would also add to that is, um, there is a grant number that accompanies EDA grant, like, it's a very long string of numbers, I would make sure to reference that, so that the purpose of that partnership is clear, so that it doesn't seem like their name ever CBO, just for a general purpose, once they're within the scope of this project.
Yes.
But I'll take a look at it, you'll have me available.
There you go. So, you have anything?
That's it.
Can I just ask something? Do you have to approve the first half of the resolution sixty-seven to authorize the application of the grant, and not the partnership? Because right now, you don't have anything that says we wanna authorize the application. That first half of the resolution sixty-seven says you're authorizing the submission of the application and entering into agreement with EPA, right now, you don't have anything on your agenda.
Well, we, we can just leave it as the Burrell is authorizing to enter into, or the government bodies authorize it.
Anytime we do a grant application, we need counts of authorization to either go after a DOT grant, or go after a CPG grant.
Instead of naming anyone, we can go and just put the, the government bodies authorizing to move forward, just.
I just don't want you to miss that tonight, and then you can't apply on Tuesday or Thursday.
So, let's, there, you're, we'll, we'll strike this here, sixty, everything out of here, and we'll put that at seventy-one. This'll be for next meeting will be seventy-one, and then what we're doing for sixty-seven will be, um, the, the Burrell will be, it's, um, uh, to submit this grant.
That will be seventy-one.
That'll be sixty-seven, this is from, this whole thing for Manuel, will move down to seventy-one, this'll be seventy-one, and sixty-seven will be to authorization, yeah.
Okay, so, Sid, thanks, uh.
That's a good catch.
Don't want this being a waste, if you don't act for it, moving forward.
Uh, just, just, Eric, if you look at your, um, text message, I, I sent you the, um, EDA grant number to reference.
Okay, I, um, right now, as we speak, you're on my phone, so I'll look at it later.
I'll just to the mayor, sir.
Okay.
I, you know, Jim, one more question, I guess as far as the agreement with the CBOs, does that, is there an official document that kinda lays out what our responsibility with this grant is, and, you know, as far as managing the sub-awards, I guess, what, what level of detail is in this CBO agreement, just to kinda define what our responsibility's gonna be, with regards to the other entities? Just to kind of define what our responsibility is gonna be with regards to the other entities?
Well, I'm not sure, uh, uh, this is all new as this came up last week. My only thing would be is that we can move with the resolution, but if, uh, we're pending that we get the agreement, and if the agreement is not there, then obviously no signature, you can't move on.
I can give you Emmanuel's number? I mean, call him anytime, but tell him not to call you, or he will call you.
But we would need, for each resolution, we would need, uh, an agreement, um, with each individual one.
Yes.
To tie into, that's what Joe was talking about. We need to understand the clearance of this. So it would be, where each one would be pending that, moving forward would be with the agreement. Uh, each to provide the agreement. And if we don't sign it, uh, then this, uh, is.
Okay.
Then this is pointless, because then you don't have the agreement. You can appoint all you want, but if they don't, either party don't sign, you don't have one. Okay.
Yeah, he, he said he has a generic that EPA gave to formulate that, and, and, uh, get it from a place, uh, for, uh, to everybody. That said, can we move on now?
Yes.
Um, Resolution twenty-two, I mean, twenty-two, forty, uh, sixty-seven, uh, government, uh, willing, government body approving to apply for this application with the, uh, um, the EPA.
The reference number EPA dash R dash O E J E C R dash.
OCS.
OCS dash twenty-three dash oh-four. That's, that's just a, um.
That's just approval to apply.
Just the approved to apply.
Can I get motion in second, please?
Second.
One second, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna. Okay.
What number?
Uh, sixty-seven.
What's the, uh, who, who?
Uh, I'm surprised.
Second.
Seventy-seven.
Okay.
And again, council had a question, is your award number, says sixty-seven only approval to apply for this.
You want authorization to.
Authorization, yeah, yeah, authorization, sorry. Full vote, please.
Mr. Fontanaz?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two, forty-sixty-eight. A resolution appointing statutory partnership with Handic County. Council on Economic Opportunity. Not as though you will, can I please get motion in second?
Motion.
Second. Any question?
No, it would be that pending that they will provide CFO and government body, um, their.
Agreement.
Agreement. If no agreement is signed, then this motion is wood, wood.
Full vote?
Mr. Fontanaz? Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two, forty-sixty-nine, appointing statutory partnership with New Beginning Behavioral Health. Also pending agreement. Can I please get motion in second?
Motion.
Second.
Any question from council? Full vote, please.
Mr. Fontanaz?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two, forty-seventy. Also appointing Washburn University, statutory partnership, by the football's identity. Again, pending agreement to the council. Can I please get motion in second?
Motion.
Okay.
Any question from the council? Full vote, please.
Mr. Fontanaz?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
President.
Yes.
On the question, can you, can I get motion in second to open for the public?
Motion. Okay.
The meeting is now open to the public. Anybody have any question, please speak to your address and speak to us. Not hearing anything, can I get motion in second to close to the public?
Full vote.
Second.
Council, and CFO, my engineer, all of it. I really do appreciate your time coming out on this special meeting, uh, giving everything that you're doing to come out. I really appreciate that. And again, I apologize for not bringing this forward to you guys. And, um, uh, we're intending to get this all straightened out. And, um, I think I would have gotten the time to discuss when it's appropriate, but because we've been back moving backwards because of the administration, that left us with no time to follow discussion for you guys to, uh, uh, get hold of what we are getting ourselves. But again, I, I would not see anything bad to get to this end, for any reason, God forbid. And I know that the way Mr. Emmanuel, he had visited our council every time. And he, he loved the town. And, um, he, he indicated that we have a lot of potential, there's a lot of things out there that we not even taking advantage of, and he's gonna help us to take advantage of it. And, uh, once we do, it's gonna benefit the township a lot. And that's it, again. Sorry for making you to, uh, you know, leave your comfortable, uh, house and your dinner to be here. I'm trying to dry all this stuff from Emmanuel. I'm glad he answered the phone because I don't know what to say. Most of your voice, I'm, I'm unable to answer. But anyway, this is what it is, I appreciate it. And I get motion in second to adjourn.
Motion.
All in trouble?
All right.